Morning, everyone. It is actually nine thirty, that clock is... And welcome to today's planning... This is all good. And I should now go through a few housekeeping before starting the actual application meeting. My name is councillor Theresa Evans. I am the Chair of the Planning Committee. To my right is councillor Jake Potter, who is the Vice Chair of the Planning Committee. The other councillors of the meeting are stated to my right and to my left on the nameplates. This meeting is being recorded and audio-recorded and livestreamed from the council's website. In addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. Other introductions on the table up here. We always have the case officer sitting where Rose Chapman, the case officer for this application, is sitting. And then we have Lorna Hutchings, who is the Planning, Delivery and Implementation Manager. Julie Pinnock, who is the Lead for the Built Environment. And Fiona Sutherland, who is our legal adviser today. Members of the public, when you come up and speak, please could you make sure that you speak clearly and that you speak closely to the microphone? The system doesn't like you to talk at it from a long way away. I think just checking that I've said everything. Oh yes, could you turn your mobile phones off or put them on silent? We're not anticipating a fire today or fire sound. So if you do hear the sound alarm, then the meeting point is downstairs in Abbey Gardens. Obviously, don't use the lift. You will be directed there by an officer who will... So we turn then to the agenda for today. Apologies and deputy members.
Good morning, Chair. Morning, members. We've had apologies from councillor Reed and councillor Cunningham for this morning's meeting. That leaves eight members of the committee present. Chair.
Thank you. And my apologies, I forgot to introduce Matthew Watson, who is the Administrative Assistant Officer for this meeting. Any disclosures of interest? Matthew?
None, ma'am, Chair, no.
And if you find that you have members and interest to declare, then please do so at the appropriate application point. Yes, councillor McLean?
Personal but certainly non-prejudicial, but I am a ward member for Bishopswaltham, which the application is. So I think I should just declare that. I've never expressed any opinions on it, but I...
Thank you. So number four, business items. Where appropriate to accept the update sheet. Can I have an agreement to accept the update sheet as an addendum to the report? And then minutes of the previous meeting. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. And we turn then to the first planning application, which is Bishopswaltham, number six on our agenda. Bishopswaltham Station Road. And it is a very large application. And it's conversion of the mill building and construction of a 66-bed care home, 38 assisted living units, 19 family houses and 12 affordable homes. The case officer is Rose Lister. And when you're ready, Rose, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to draw your attention to the update sheet. There have been a number of updates to this application, as detailed on there. Here we have the red line plan.
May, before we start, we were emailed yesterday some out of the previous applications. Should they be included in the pack? Yesterday, we were emailed across three drawings of the previous or the existing application. Should they be included in this pack for our members listening and members of the public?
There are some additional slides at the end of the presentation that I've included in the update sheet as well.
Those who are listening, we did conduct a site visit yesterday to the site. And that's what councillor McLean was referring to. Okay, shall we continue?
Thank you, Chair. So here we have the red line plan. At the point of cursor, we have Station Road running to the north, as you might hear around the pond. We have Bishop's Lane running to the east. The old railway line, which is now a footpath and cycle path west. And Martin Street is just to the northwest here. There is a public right-of-way that runs along the north of the site, along the other side of the road, adjacent to the pond at the point of cursor here. Here we have an aerial view of the site with a... With the site in context, you can see the Bishop's Palace to the east of the site here, which is a scheduled monument, and I'll go into that in a little bit. Palace House, which is a grade-two star listed building, is here at the point of cursor. The village centre is across the road. Sainsbury's is here. The village centre is just off the... Here we have the... Highlighted in yellow is the conservation area. You can see the site that is partially within the conservation area, including the Abbey Mill Building at the front here. This red line here denotes the line of the public right-of-way along Station Road. I should say that this section of the site at the point of cursor highlighted here is outside of the settlement boundary and is within the countryside. The rest to the western part of the site, indicated here at the point of cursor, this is within the settlement boundary. Similarly, here we have, in the purple hatch, is the scheduled ancient monument of the Bishop's Palace and ponds. As you can see, the area to the east of the map is within the scheduled monument. And at the top northern part of the site includes the medieval dam, which the Abbey Mill Building is located on top of, but is not part of the listing for the scheduled monument. Here we have a site plan as proposed. To the east part of the site is proposed public open space. It would be, there is an access here at the corner of Station Road. There is a proposed footpath over the existing alleviation channel so that it can be accessed from the development site behind the main block of assisted living units and in front of the care home. And it can also be accessed from the rear of the care home as well. The extra care units are located in the central part of the application site.
So, Chair, I've got to ask a question here because we've got... This here is different from the one we're looking at, which is the correct version.
So the plan you've got holding up there, that is one that was submitted by the applicant. It's the same as the one I've just shown you. It's only highlighted in purple on this... It's highlighted in purple on the site because I've used a different... The council's own mapping system rather than the applicant's map.
This one seems to show a car park between the affordable homes and the rest of the care homes. Seems to, unless I'm misinterpreting it.
There is a car park located at the point of cursor here. So there's parking along here and down here. There's parking along the front here and there's parking here.
Must be misinterpreting what you've given me then. Okay, sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Rose, could you just explain? When we had the site visit yesterday, we were given copies for us to look at while we were standing and walking around the site. And we were given that one that we have on the screen. And then we also were given the one that councillor Pearson was referring to. So this, the one on the screen that we're looking at now, that is the city council's...
This map here, this is the city council's map, right, showing highlighting the scheduled monument. This map here is submitted by the applicant, showing the general layout of the application site.
The one which councillor Pearson was referring to...
The one that councillor Pearson held up was the scheduled monument plan. So it was there to highlight where the scheduled monument was or is on the site.
Right, okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think possibly the committee and me included are a little confused here. Extra help would be...
Apology, I wasn't at the site visit with you Monday, but I know Lorna and Rose were. I think the plan they handed out at the visit was from the applicant's deck of plans to show you, just to give you context while you were on-site, to show you where the scheduled ancient monument was. And I presume it showed the boundary of the conservation area maybe. What Rose has done in her presentation deck today is she's just shown you that on a different base plan. It's the same information, she's just showing it to you based on our GIS system. So we're satisfied that the information that you've got is accurate and we can proceed to present the rest of the plans for you. And maybe at the end, if there's still any discrepancy, we can have another go at trying to clarify that, Chair.
Thank you. So do carry on, Rose. Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you, Chair. So to the western side of the application site is the family housings to the rear here. And the affordable housing unit would be here in the corner. Just to clarify, some of the highways comments recommend a traffic regulation order along Station Road. But these will be at the point of cursor on the other side of the road along the public footpath here. And on the southern part of Station Road, it will run just along the front here, between the two access points to the parking and along the internal road here. This is to allow visibility displays and access for larger vehicles. Here we have the proposed open space. The site is currently covered in self-seeded trees that are proposed to be removed as they are mostly of poor quality. There is a footpath that would be a mown grass footpath, you can see in darker green highlighted here. The central area would be planted with wildflowers. And there is sufficient space for informal play areas. So these are not included specifically within this map. There are currently trees around the alleviation channel that is shown here in blue. And these are mostly to be removed because they are self-seeded and of poor quality and would be replaced with biodiversity and flood prevention planting. And you can see additional planting highlighted here by the zigzag green. A footpath, footbridge here, shown over the alleviation channel that would lead into the site. It can also be accessed from the bottom here to the site as well. The proposal includes diverting the route of the River Hamball. So the existing route is shown on the western side here. There is also an additional here that is proposed to be abandoned. You can see here in black and white, this is the proposed channel. So the river would then run from the pond through the alleviation channel and out into the existing river. Here is a close-up of the proposed works, shown in green. So it would significantly reduce the length of flow and it would... Make the path less convoluted. The Environment Agency has assessed this and deemed it to be acceptable. Moving on to some elevations, here we have some street scenes. At the top here, we have the street scene that would be along Station Road, showing the Abbey Mill Building here. This is block A. This is block B. Underneath here, we have the view from the open space with the care home. The main affordable, sorry, the main assisted living unit block here. And at the front here, the Abbey Mill Building. And here we have the street scene across the rear of the site. So you can see some of the family houses at the top of the mound here. The majority of the site being screened by existing trees. It should be highlighted that there is a line of existing trees here. But just for clarification, they've been removed, so they appreciate the levels area. Here we have the elevations for block A. For reference, at the bottom of this slide, you can see the highlighted building at the bottom corner. This would be an assisted living block over the first two stories here that were visible from Station Road. The rear, there is a lower level that would be given over to parking, cycle storage and bin storage. There is a level change on the site that you can see appreciated here. So Station Road is significantly higher. And to the rear, there is a significant drop. So the front of the elevation appears to be two stories, while the rear appears to be three. Here we have block B, which is the Abbey Mill Building. This is proposed to be converted into three assisted living flats. A manager's flat and communal rooms for the assisted living unit. There is proposed to be a small extension that you can see at the point of cursor here. This is mainly containing stairs and emergency access to the building. There have been concerns raised regarding the structural integrity of the building, and these have been secured under conditions eight, nine and 10. Here we have block C, which is the care home, shown at the bottom corner here. So here we have the north elevations at the top, southern elevations at the bottom. And again, here we have the eastern elevations and the western elevations. Here we have block D, which is the main bulk of the assisted living units. This is the north elevation at the top, south elevation at the bottom. And again with block D for the east and west elevations. You can see where it is at the map. Here we have block E, which is the affordable housing units. At the bottom corner, this is where it would be located on the site. Here we have block F, located in the top corner that you can see here, just behind the affordable housing units. These would comprise of a terrace of six dwellings facing internally into the site. The units on either end are three-bed units, with the central four being two-bed units. Here we have blocks G, which are two of the family housings, located here on the map in the corner. These are both semi-detached two-bed dwellings. Here we have the first section of block H, located here, so this is the northern block H. The detached building would be a three-bed dwelling. And H2 shown here was the terrace. Either side at the end is, would be three beds, and the central unit would be a two-bed. Here we have the north and south elevations for the southern block of block H. Here, at the bottom of the map. The detached dwellings, H3 and H4, here and here, are both three-bed dwellings. While H5, terrace here, are all three-bed dwellings. Same area of housing, these are the side elevations. So the top is H3, which is this building here at the point of cursor. The middle set of drawings are the side elevations for block H4, which is this building here, cursor. And the bottom is the side elevations, east and west, for block H5. And then moving on to some photos of the site. At the top, we have the view looking along Station Road into the site. The affordable housing building would be located approximately here. The main entrance of the site approximately... At the bottom, this is looking corner of Bishop's Lane along Station Road. And you can see the Abbey Mill Building here and the trees adjacent. Here we have a view of the corner of Bishop's Lane and Station Road with the palace buildings here. There is a significant plane tree that's mentioned in the conservation area appraisal, and that will be retained. The access to the landscaping, public open space would be approximately at the point of cursor here. Underneath, we see a view of the existing mill building, supposed to be retained. Here we have a better view of the Abbey Mill Building from the side elevation here. This will have a small extension for the fire escape at the top. And you can appreciate the site of the medieval dam, which is located here. At the bottom, you can see the rear of the Abbey Mill Building. You can appreciate some of the level changes on the site. This concrete wall here denoting the path of the medieval dam. Here is a picture of the existing access from the site. So Station Road lies along the top here. The access going down, you can appreciate the level changes here. And at the bottom, we have a view across the site towards the alleviation channel, which is here. And you can appreciate some of the self-seeded willow that has grown up around the alleviation channel. At the top here, you can appreciate some of the neighbouring sites. The other side of this fence, there is the old railway track, footpath, cycle path, tidalway. And behind that are some of the existing neighbouring properties. Martin Street. At the bottom here, you can see and appreciate some of the other level changes on the site with this mound. This would be the location of blocks H1 to 5. At the top here, it's a view from the rear of the site, looking north towards Station Road and the Mill Building. And at the bottom here, looking across the site towards Martin Street. Appreciate the height of the mound, which will have blocks H4 and... Here we have at the top a view of the existing alleviation channel. Some of the self-seeded trees that you can see, these would be removed and replaced with biodiversity-enhancing and flood prevention planting. At the bottom here, you can see the proposed area of public open space. It's currently very overgrown with self-seeded trees, scrambles. These would be removed and wildflower planting would be included. Here is, at the top, we can see the eastern boundary of the site. These trees would be retained. And a view down Bishop's Lane with Palace House just visible on the left hand side here. As indicated on the update sheet, there's just a few more slides, Chair. And so in the event of a one in 1,000 plus year storm, which is considered to be extremely rare. And it may result in the north pond overtopping. The north pond you can see at the top here. This level of flooding is as existing. And this blue line here that you can see would be the line of any water overtopping as a result of a one in 1,000 year plus storm event. That would come onto station road through the site. Front of the assisted living units and into the alleviation channel. This should not result in any flooding to any of the buildings. And then just a point of clarification for these follow up plans. And these are the plans for the previous application for a Sainsbury's supermarket. So you can appreciate the differences between the two schemes. But this was the red line plan that included the pond here, as well as a large chunk of station road and Winchester Road. And so this was the proposed pedestrian crossing at the time, as well as a few other highways improvements. And finally, this is a general site layout, so you can see the Sainsbury's building here, the proposed GP surgery. The majority of station road here would have been a mixed use pedestrian and car access. So the majority of this site would have had public realm with planting and seating areas. The Abbey Mill building is seen here, would have been retained as the access to the Sainsbury's building. And the Abbey Field public open space is shown here. Recommendation is to permit.
Thank you very much, Ruth. Um, we now move to the public speaking. Um, we don't have anyone speaking as an objector. But parish council representatives, we have two councillors, Jonathan Williams and councillor Kevin Jones. If you would both like to approach the public participation. Or is it just you, Jonathan? Yeah, okay, well, that makes things slightly easier from your point of view. Um, because you don't have to share the three minutes. So when you're ready, you press the button at the bottom of the microphone. And when you're ready, you have three minutes and your time will be shown on the screen. I have to stop you after three minutes, I'm afraid. When you're ready.
Uh, this site known as Abbey Mill is an important position in central Bishop's Waltham along station road, next to the English Heritage Site, Bishop's Waltham Palace. Site has been a matter of discussion regarding development for many years. The site was home of Duke's Mill and there is an old mill building on the edge of the site. After Duke's Mill closed, the site was used for many industrial activities, including garage, light industrial units and storage of coaches for a local bus company. It's therefore been a brownfield site in the recent past. In a previous application for this site, permission was granted for a supermarket and doctor's surgery. In the event the company did not act on that permission and the site became available again. The first planning application for the site did not include retention of the mill building, as the company believed it was beyond renovation. However, on further inspection, the current plan includes retaining the old mill. We note that the historic environment would like more detail about the renovation process, which the parish council would welcome. Many consultants state no objection to these plans with a number of conditions which they would request be included in any permission granted. Bishop's Waltham Parish Council supports this application to improve a derelict part of our beautiful medieval market town with the following comments. To investigate the reduction in height of the building adjacent to the mill. A maintenance plan for the south pond to clarify responsibilities. A link to the railway path at the southern end of the site. Production of a construction management plan to avoid parking in the surrounding areas. A traffic parking management plan for station road. Mitigation measures recommended concerning flooding, drainage, archaeological landscaping, lighting and the material should be included as any conditions of permission. And finally, as a condition, an improved route for pedestrians to the town centre, including a controlled, safe crossing point on the Winchester Road, as historically agreed in prior conditions of planning improvement on the same site, should be considered.
Thank you very much. There could be some questions of clarification from members of the committee. Are there? So, so thank you very much. Um, you can return to your seat. Um, and the last public speaker we have is Giles Brockbank. Speaking on behalf of the Ridgeham Partners LLC. C is a G. And you're the agent for the application. So when you're ready, please start.
Thank you. Good morning. Um, yes, I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant Beechcroft Developments. Um, I first of all like to thank officers for their, for their hard work in helping bring in this site forward, this brownfield site and the strong recommendation that you have for approval before you today. Um, just picking up on a, a few comments that have been raised. First of all, the parish council's request that mitigation measures relating to flooding, drainage, archaeology, landscaping, lighting and materials have been conditioned as part of, of the application in agreement with your officers. Um, there has been discussion and it's, it's in the, the late papers about the pedestrian crossing on Winchester Road. Um, this is something that, that my clients would be happy to facilitate. But from discussions with your officers, it's not considered that's fairly and reasonably related to this development. Um, I know wider matters are afoot to try and facilitate that through seal funding, which is something that the council discussion, discussing with Hampshire County Council. Um, there also will be seal funding from this development, 25% of which will be made available for infrastructure improvements, which roughly equates to around about £50,000, which would cover the cost of the crossing. So hopefully that is something that can be facilitated anyway in due course. Um, we've, we've touched upon the flooding, again, that's within the, the late comments. But, um, the, the site will be resilient to the one in 1,000 year flood event, um, plus climate change. This is something that's been considered by the local lead flood authority and the EA in this particular case. Um, there's also underground storage here, um, to store water i- in such an event and release at a controlled rate. So we feel that that's well, well covered within this application. Um, in terms of landscaping, um, this will be managed by Beechcroft Developments. There will be a charge to the residents of the development. It's something that, that they want to retain control of to ensure um, there's no antisocial behaviour on the open space in due course. Not saying that there would be, but it's something that needs to be looked after. But also to ensure the landscaping is maintained to a very high standard. Um, in terms of the affordable housing, um, again, that's been covered off, which is at the front of the site. Is within a single block for ease of management by the RSL and reduced service charges. But also, so it's very accessible to Bishop's Waltham. Um, as you've heard, we're retaining the mill building, which is a non-designated heritage asset. Um, and that deals with the objections from the Bishop's Waltham Society and the museum trust. Um, there have been 39 objections, but since the application's been amended, that's been reduced to 26, um, following positive changes. Um, there's mention of 14 employees, there will actually be 60 in total with, with the care home and everything else on the site. Um, and also in terms of the parking, um, it's unallocated, but it, it will meet council standards. And I know my time is up, so, um, thank you for your consideration and trust you'll be able to support, support the positive recommendation in front of you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So there might possibly be questions of clarification. Start with councillor McLean.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. Two things really, the first one is the flood element discussion. Currently, there are two culverts coming out of the south pond. One of them is an emergency culvert and the other one is the culvert that runs underground. Um, what you're proposing, I think, is to replace two for one.
Correct, yes.
Now, looking at the map, this was a late addition. The entrance to the culvert from, that you're proposing appears to come out of someone's back garden. Which is to the, where the current emergency culvert is, it's further round, if you like, to the north of that. Butts up to, um, I can't think of the name of the house, but butts up to their garden. Has that been, do you explain a little bit more about where you're actually coming in from? And secondly, um, which councillor Williams brought up, was the crossing across the Winchester Road, which is on the existing planning application, which you're planning to shave off the application. And that does worry me an awful lot. Most of this I can totally support, but that portion of it, I don't. Um, I think we need somewhere to allow an easy access of what will be quite a few elderly people into the centre of Bishop's Waltham, and just a broken road crossing is not sufficient. I wonder if you could comment on that as well.
Yes, yeah, of course. I, I think dealing with the, the drainage point first. Um, I, I should qualify that, that I'm, I'm not a drainage, drainage expert. But our drainage engineers, in conjunction with the local lead flood authority and the EA, have looked at the optimum location for, for the new culvert in this particular, in this particular case. And, and where it is shown is considered to be the most appropriate location for that. Um, and consider that it's not going to affect any existing residents. Um, the other thing to mention as well is, is the, the new culvert will be, will be slightly larger anyway. So it will have an increased capacity and, you know, everybody that, that's looked at it as part of the proposals is, is satisfied that that, that is the right location and the right size. Um, and will obviously do what it needs to do, should there be, um, a, an event sort of in excess of the one in 1,000 year flood event. So I, I hopefully that, that deals with that particular point. Um, in, in terms, in terms of the crossing, um, this, this particular point, um, I know he's, he's covered in the late papers. Um, I, I did mention it very briefly in passing within, within my comments. But, um, essentially, um, the, the number of the situation is, you know, we, we've been happy, um, or rather, my clients are happy to, to contribute towards an improved crossing on the Winchester Road. Um, but through discussions with, with your officers, um, and with the county council, it's felt that that isn't reasonably related to, to the development in this particular case. Um, you know, that's the discussion that, that we've had with them, very much along those lines, that it doesn't, it doesn't accord with the circular on the 106 and, and isn't reasonably related. Um, so as, as a consequence of that, you know, we, we've, we've considered other, other options for it or other options that could be looked at in due course with other funding that is available. Uh, and as I mentioned in my, uh, in my, in my very brief speech there, you know, there is, there is existing seal funding available to help with that. But also, more importantly, there will be seal funding that comes from this development as well. Um, I think overall it's about £267,000, which will come from the development, um, overall for seal funding. And part of that, as I mentioned, is earmarked for, for, um, infrastructure improvements. So that's something that could be considered. Um, but as, as I say, going, going sort of full circle on this, um, you know, it is something that we've been willing to explore. But as it's, as we're told, it's not fairly and reasonably related to, to the development as, as proposed. Do you know, our hands are somewhat tied on it.
Any further questions? Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I also am concerned about the crossing, but I'll, I'll take what you've said. So I would ask any further questions about that. Um, the south pond, obviously, is a crucial element of this. The attenuation tank you've mentioned. And also the, I want to say drainage, because that's not quite an overflow, shall we say, channel. What depth of the south pond is going to be maintained in that? Because like all. Ponds, lakes. Whatever it, gradually fills up with silt. So how are you going to maintain the depth in that pond?
Um, good, good question. I mean, that's, that's, that's something, I'm probably not, not, not clear on how, how we would necessarily do that. But it would be something that would be monitored on a fairly regular basis. Um, as, as I've mentioned, um, as part of my discussion, certainly the wider landscaping, which, which would include, uh, um, the, the pond as well. You know, they will be maintained and, and looked after in perpetuity. Um, so certainly there is, there is, there would be the mechanisms there to, to ensure that that is looked after in due course. Um, and I don't, I don't think it's been maintained for some time. So certainly that's, that's something that would be looked at anyway.
Yes, you're right about the lack of maintenance in, in recent times. I agree with you. But quite clearly, um, if we're talking about a one, 1,000 year flood event, which I certain climate version, I think incredibly optimistic at the Environment Agency. That's the figure they quoted to you. The maintenance of that pond is crucial for flood control. As lakes and ponds do that naturally, that's, that's the important thing. Now, a slightly other question, and that is, you mentioned, I think, in your speech, about 60 employees on the site. Is that correct? Now, are these? That'd be, I presume, a mixture of maintenance staff, security staff, nursing staff. In other words, it's the total of all the mixture of whatever staff you have on the site. Is that correct?
That, that, that's correct. I mean, the, the majority of which will be, will be care related staff for, for the care home.
Yeah, because I mean, you, you mentioned security for elderly people, especially, particularly elderly people have a medical issue, and that's one of the conditions residents, I understand, Beechcroft is laying down. So these are not 100% fit, with the exception, of course, the affordable housing. And quite clearly, that medical staff is crucially important, but so is security.
Yes, no, absolutely. And, you know, the, the site would be managed accordingly to, to make sure, you know, that it, the site is secure, um, you know, throughout the day and, and 24/7 really. So, um, and, and certainly having, having a site manager onsite is, is something that Beechcroft do on a, on a, on a regular basis across all of their sites. So it's, it's something that they're used to managing and used to managing and controlling that security in relation to care and assisted living.
Yeah, coming down to the parking now, as you know from visiting the site, which I'm sure you have on more than one occasion, um, or at least your colleague certainly has, there is a parking issue along station road. Uh, now, there's going to be a tendency, you're talking about traffic, TROs, um, or at least the notes do about traffic regulation. I presume that implies control of parking on station road. Now, there's going to be an inclination of those drivers who regularly park there to go down onto your care home site. You say this, the parking spaces are unallocated. So how are you going to control that?
Um, uh, well, as, as I mentioned, there, there will be an onsite manager. So certainly, you know, there's the ability to monitor that and, and obviously ensure, you know, who is parking on the site is related to the site in that regard. Um, so, you know, it won't be a case that people can just drive onto the site and, you know, and park indiscriminately. Um, uh, if you like. Um, and obviously with, as you say, with the, with the TRO, there is the ability to ensure that there's still an opportunity for people to use station road as they do it presently for, for parking anyway. Thank you.
I, I noticed that your colleague has his hand up. Um, we don't normally accept any comments on the floor, but it could be relevant. Yeah, I think you're going to need to speak into a microphone.
If it's okay, I'll just go back over a couple of things that Giles has said. In terms of employee numbers, Giles is right, the majority of the staff on site will be care related. That's in connection with both the care home, but obviously the assisted living element as well. Generally speaking, the care home will operate on three shifts, eight hours each. There's going to be probably eight to 10 staff, nursing staff on every shift. So just the nursing staff alone are likely to be 30, but they're in eight hour shifts. So they turn over every eight hours. In addition to that, there will be additional staff available for the assisted living. So, yeah, it's going to be 40 minimum, but sometimes up to sort of 60 staff, sort of rotating, if that makes sense, associated with the site. That's probably what I wanted to say on that particular point.
These fully qualified nursing staff, are they regular care home staff?
Correct, yes. So it's all controlled and run by the care home operator. So the care on site is run by the care home operator and then the assisted living residents effectively tap into that care provision. And just touching, there was a query at the site visit, I believe, relating to eligibility of residents for the assisted living. So in effect, because the care home provides the care, they undertake an assessment which is controlled and covered in the Section 106 agreement and an eligible or potentially eligible purchaser would have to demonstrate that they meet the minimum care requirement, which is one and a half hours a week. If they don't meet that requirement on assessment from the care home, they are not considered to be an eligible purchaser. So it's a fairly strict list of criteria they have to meet to be an eligible purchaser to have care.
Thank you for that answer. I know we had a conversation about this on the site visit, but the rest of the committee didn't hear that conversation, so that's why I wanted to bring it out.
Thank you. Waiting to ask questions, I have, would you like to return to your seat? Because you actually haven't registered to speak, but I did appreciate that you might want to add clarity. So I've got councillors Westwood and Leaming waiting to speak. And, oh, and Rutter, and she actually asked first, I'm going to go to councillor Rutter.
Thank you, thank you Chair. Could I ask about the staff members? Will there be travel to work plans for them? I mean, obviously, we're doing our very best to encourage people to not use cars, but to use public transport to cycle, to walk wherever possible. Can I ask, presumably that this effectively is opening up the river, is it? So that there will be water flowing through the stream that's going to have the footpath over it? Or not, I don't know, that would be useful to know. And the final question I have, two elements. First of all, I'm very keen that this should not be seen as a sort of gated development or exclusive just to the residents and that local people should feel that they can walk through and access the open space through the development and that that will not be discouraged. Although obviously, one respects the privacy of the residents and so on. But it's not a gated development, it's not going to be exclusive in that way. And also, I just wanted to bring up the question that the parish councillor asked about access to the bridleway behind, which sadly doesn't actually go anywhere. And I know that there is quite a big level difference, but at the top end, where the residential houses are, the level seems to be much less and that might well be the place where the people who live in those homes would appreciate another access onto that public bridleway footpath, the old railway line. So could you consider that and look at the opportunity there? Those were my questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, I've picked up all of them, but if I do miss anything, do let me know. I think in terms of the site and staff coming and going, I mean, there is a condition attached to the permission to agree a travel plan and that's something that we would look to do as a matter of course, to ensure, obviously, people are coming to and from the site in the most sustainable methods possible. So avoiding the use of the car as best we possibly can. In terms of the drainage, the water will be within a new culvert, so it still will be covered over. But it's, you know, it's not dissimilar to what's happening at the moment, but just that there is a new or will be a new culvert in place, as it were. In terms of in terms of the access to the footpath along the old railway line, there is actually a bit of a level difference within that corner. So actually, you know, it wouldn't be readily accessible to all as a consequence of that. So, you know, in order to take things forward and make it inclusive for all, we were still proposing to utilise the existing access into the site because actually, in reality, there's not a great deal of difference of distance wise to get to that corner if you are on the site. You know, it's a fairly short walk to walk to the front and then round to utilise the footpath. So from that point of view, I think it would still work reasonably well. And certainly, I think your other point on the fact, you know, will it be a gated community? No, no, it won't be. I mean, certainly, our discussions in relation to this site go back a long, long time now, as you well know. But one of those points of discussion has always been around the open space on the eastern side and the connectivity of that space. And that's something that we have discussed with Historic England from a very early stage and they've always been keen to ensure that that is accessible for the wider community. And as a consequence of that, that's why we're showing a footpath link in the top corner of the site there. So, you know, people can come and enjoy that space and can walk around there. From, you know, the general residents of Bishopswortham can come in and walk around the site. I suppose what we are saying though, in reality, is just, you know, because of the users of the site and because that is adjacent to the care home and to the assisted living, where the more vulnerable residents will be situated on site, all we want to be able to do is to ensure that there is a degree of security between where our site enters the public open space and that enters our site. If you were so, there is some degree of security there and we retain the ability to monitor that. I hope that.
If I could just very briefly come back on that. You're not going to refuse entrance to non-residents across the footbridge and through the development, are you?
No, we weren't, we're not intending.
Without good reason, anyway.
No, 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 not at all. I think it's just, you know, in situations where it's sort of, you know, for example, this time of year, late in the evening, if people were, you know, playing within the public open space and, you know, perhaps wandering into the site, you know, unnecessarily, that's where we would maintain a degree of security. But it's not sort of, you know, a case where people can't walk in. It's just given us the ability to monitor that more than anything.
Thank you. Councillor Westwood?
Thank you Chair. I've got two areas I want to discuss. One is around the active travel and the second is around the energy and carbon footprint. So I'll start with the travel. I endorse the comments from councillor McLean about the ability for people within this development to walk safely into and out of the centre of Bishopswortham. I won't pursue that anymore. I agree with all the comments that are made, but personally, I would like to see that this development makes it easy for those people who are going to be aged, many of them, to walk and use their mobility, scooters or whatever else to go in and out of the main centre of Bishopswortham, which I think is vital. Don't cut these people off, which I've seen so many care homes and developers of this site. Secondly, in terms of the permeability, which was discussed by councillor Rutter and also brought up by Jonathan Williams, the parish councillor, I too would like to see the site more permeable. And we talked about the link up in the top corner onto the bridleway path. And I agree with the comments of councillor Rutter that the site must remain permeable and welcoming to people from across Bishopswortham and not exclusive to the people in that development. So I'd like that to be taken into consideration if we can. So, and then on to the other area in terms of carbon efficiency effectively. This council has a climate emergency declared, it's central to all of our policies. And when I look at the planning applications, the documents, there's over 350 documents for me to plough through on the planning application. It's quite difficult for me to dig into those and find the impact, carbon impact of this development, both through the actual build and in the actual running once the site has been developed. So could you comment on two areas to start with? I'm sure councillor Leaming will have more questions following me. But firstly, on the build, if the energy efficiency of the buildings that you propose to develop on the site. And secondly, how you propose to heat and cool and the energy sources that you'll be using for those buildings.
Yes, I think, just picking that up, I mean, most of the construction of the buildings will be a fabric first approach, ensuring that we obviously do meet a latest building regs. There is a condition attached to any permission that might be granted as well to ensure that, you know, we're adhering to the most appropriate standards in that regard. In terms of the future heating and what have you of the site, again, I mean, that's something to be looked at as we go forward. I don't know whether this site at the moment is suitable for ground source. And that's something, actually, dare I say it, that my client might be better placed to answer than myself in terms of, I don't know what investigations have been done on that to date, but certainly, we will be doing what we can to ensure that, you know, we are meeting standards and the condition is there, as I say, to ensure that we do adhere to that as best we possibly can.
Thank you. And I note the comments and also your colleague's got his hand up at the back. So councillor Williams, you may want to bring him forward, so I leave that to your decision. As a council, with the climate emergency, our preferred route forward would be for ground source heating for this development. I note that we've got the area that's currently covered in trees, but it will be the open area. And also, you've got the site itself, both of which can be assessed for suitability for boreholes for this particular development. But our preferred route forward would be not to have gas boiler heating installed across this site.
Thank you. I'm going to be quite strict here. You haven't registered to speak, gentle sir. Unless you think what you've got to add to the committee is really important and the committee needs to hear it. You've left me in a sort of strange position. Okay, briefly, if you're not, yes, come and tell us.
Sorry, you need to say all this into the microphone, I'm afraid. Just very briefly, if you don't mind, thank you very much.
It's being recorded and we really can't hear you.
The precise details will need to be agreed with the local authorities. So ultimately, it will be a point of negotiation with the local authority. But as Giles has said, we will be required to meet the council's policies and standards. We do use an awful lot of air source heat pumps, that's usually our starting point. It's not our end point, but it's what we look at usually.
I don't want this to go on and on, but councillor McLean, is there a question for the gentleman who we met on the site?
Yes, I would ask mysterious questions, Chair. Have you considered solar PV? It doesn't seem to have come up anywhere.
Yes, we have, yeah. I mean, we've obviously got the sensitivity of the site from a historic perspective to think about. But yes, so as part of our conditions, details, we will look at all the different options. So air source heat pumps, ground source heat pumps, PV. I suspect ground source will be discounted fairly quickly because of the lack of space. They're hugely space inefficient, if you like. So it's likely to be either PV or air source heat pumps or a combination of the two. But it's details that would come out of the detail design work.
You know, picking up on councillor Westwood's point, you've got the, if you like, the open space area. That could be ground sourced very easily without any maintenance issues.
It's a scheduled ancient monument, so that's the issue. So in terms of digging in that, that's going to be a flat out no from Historic England, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. If you'd like to return to your seat. Councillor Leaming, you've been waiting very patiently.
Yeah, I would like to just pick up on the air source while we're talking about it. You've got a huge pond sitting behind you, you can use that for ground source heat pumping as well. Now, I am concerned about level of installation that you're going to build in the houses. Are you going to build it to the government standard or are you going to build it to the Winchester District's preferred standard? And this is in our policy CP11 or looking at the new local plan where we're trying to get at least passive house standards? That is something that is of high importance to us and our climate emergency. So I'd like to raise that point and then I'd like to go on to the pond. So perhaps you'd like to carry the first bit?
Yeah, as we've said, I mean, there is a condition to ensure that we adhere to current standards. So that would be in line with the existing adopted policy and that's something that we would look to do in due course.
No, I'm referring to whether you're going to build to, what we're asking for is code five. On our present plan, as the government only asks for code four, which is the minimum. Are you proposing to build to just the minimum or to the preferred standard?
I mean, as much as we can to the preferred standard and that's the reason for the condition. So we can explore the most appropriate routes with the council around all of that. So around all of the points that we've discussed this morning.
Yeah, but you've also got to take into account the residents that are going to live there and their heating costs. That's why we're asking for a much better standard from the government. And that is primary importance on what we're doing with our climate emergency. That's the crux of it.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I fully appreciate that. And as I say, we will be doing, you know, what we can within our remit and what we agree with the council to ensure that, you know, we're building to the best standards we can on this site.
So do you accept code five as a minimum?
Councillor. Probably going to say the same thing.
Gervin, I just wanted to remind you that we can only require what's in our current adopted local plan sets out our requirement. But the government issued a ministry statement and we have conditions 16 and 17 which enable us to achieve slightly more than building regulations, but not as more as our aspirational. And we can't ask for any more than that, Chair. And I just think whilst it's obviously two members to sort of ask the agent this, I just remind you that, you know, we could not require by condition beyond the current.
Yeah, it depends on what the actual developer will locate it, surely.
That may be so councillor Leaming, but we can't require that or condition it as such today. So, thank you.
And I was going to say that Mr Brockbank is not on trial and only sort of being persecuted here.
I'm just trying to find the position of where we are.
Well, you stated your point councillor.
Also, then we go on to car charging.
Do you have any further questions?
Yeah, I've got two more. One is the car charging.
We have there, there is room for car charging.
Yeah, but are you going to provide it?
Yes, we are, yeah.
Okay. The second part is the pond. That does give you a great deal of one, who's going to pay for the maintenance of that pond? Who is responsible for the dam itself? Maintenance is a huge problem when it comes to I know from experience that a pond that size could actually have something up to six feet silt already in it, which will give you about 12,000 tonnes to dispose of. There's a lot of cost involved in that, meaning the maintenance. Are you putting the maintenance on? Are you going to take the maintenance?
At this stage, it's difficult to answer that question until we
At this stage, it's difficult to answer that question until we investigate the pond properly and have a proper understanding of, for example, how much silt is in the pond at this particular moment in time, it's difficult to say. I mean, if it's a significant cost, that's something that we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to consider as we go forward, so I don't think it's, it's an easy answer for me to provide you at this particular moment in time until further investigative work is carried out.
With relation to the actual dam itself, have you done any structural surveys on that, because I noticed that there's a large concrete retaining wall on the site, that must have been put there for a particular reason, or what you've done.
Yeah, as part of the flood risk work that we've done and the modelling work that we've done, that has looked at the, the existing situation and the existing dam and whether or not that is, is suitable as it, as it stands, and certainly the answer that we've been given by our experts is that, yes, that is the case, and clearly that's something that's also been considered as part of the consultation process with the local flood authority and, and the Environment Agency. So going on the information that we've been provided, yes, yeah, we're satisfied that that's, that's suitable as it stands.
Councillor Clea.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Mr Brockbank, welcome. You've been asked lots of questions, but I know it's already been mentioned, but I too am very surprised and rather disappointed about the crossing. I think that should be dealt with and investigated more, please, I would love that. Also, with landscape, I know the proposal includes public open space and it's proposed for the area to be maintained by a management company, those specific details are not there. So will the residents be paying for the maintenance to the management company? That's fine, but then if you get, it's going to sound very rude, but everybody from Bishopswortham coming through and enjoying the open space, which is fine, so but the residents then will also be paying for everybody else to come in, I just wanted to check that, sir, if that's okay.
That is okay, yeah, that's fine, I'm picking up the landscaping point first of all. I mean, what is proposed is, is a very informal open space, so yes, residents will be paying for its upkeep of it, and it is something, and it's a charge which is evident to anybody looking to live on the site right, right from, right from day one, as it were, but because the open space is relatively informal, the upkeep of it should be, you know, reasonably straightforward in that regard, but also, I think, coupled with the fact, and I know this was covered in the presentation by officers, coupled with the fact that, you know, obviously looking at biodiversity enhancements across the site and wildflower planting, so actually in relatively, relative terms, maintaining the public open space should be reasonably straightforward from that point of view. You know, we're not, we're not proposing, you know, a formal play area or anything of that nature, it's very much more akin to, you know, allowing people to enjoy that open space and to walk around it and have a fairly informal walkway. In terms, in terms of pedestrian crossing, I think I've sort of covered that point in terms of what's been said this morning, we've, we've made our position fairly clear in terms of, you know, what my, what my client has been prepared to do, but, but the fact that there is obviously another mechanism there, another way to facilitate that crossing, which we've mentioned this morning and certainly has been covered in the update sheet as well, so hopefully that's, that's covered that point.
I've got two questions, I'm sorry, and I have represented, excuse me, I have represented areas where the open space is paid for by the local residents. This is a totally different situation in that, on the one hand, you're saying that the residents of Bishopswortham are very free to come and there shouldn't be any problems because it's an informal space, and then you're expecting some sort of payment from, who will be liable to pay for them, anything that needs to be done? Will it be just what we're looking at, the residential unit plus the care home plus the assisted care?
Yes, yeah, that's correct, it's, it will be, will be paid for by, by the residents of, of the site, and it will be looked after. As we've mentioned already, there will be a site manager who, who will have various responsibilities, one of which is likely to be the upkeep and maintenance of the landscape, so, you know, that is something that Beechcroft do, I think, as I've mentioned already, across, you know, all of their sites where, you know, the landscaping is maintained for the, for the enjoyment of all.
Okay, I might come back to that in debate, but you've, you've costed it and you think that that system will work?
Yeah, yes, correct, I mean, I haven't costed it personally, but it, but it is something that, that my clients have and it's something that my clients are prepared to do and take on in this particular case.
Okay, thank you, and my second question, and I did ask it at the site visit yesterday, and miraculously, oh, no, it was Monday, I think, miraculously it appeared on the update sheet, but it is the location of the affordable housing, which is in that top corner, isn't it, on the left-hand side, and the answer that is given in the update sheet, I'm not too sure about, but why was that area chosen for the affordable housing?
Primarily, primarily because the, the affordable housing in that location is very accessible, is very accessible to Bishopswortham, but, but I think, as I mentioned in my, my speech, it's, it's all within one block really because of ease of maintenance for, for a registered social landlord, and also having the affordable in one location as well keeps the, you know, any surcharge associated with the affordable down as well because it's easier to maintain that block, but, but really comes back to the fact that, you know, in that location, it's more readily accessible and that was felt to be the most appropriate location for it.
It is also the noisiest spot on the site.
Well, I mean, in, in, in relative terms perhaps, but I think, you know, when you look at the, when you look at the site as a whole, actually, it's relatively peaceful as a whole, I mean, the only, the only noise that one does get when you're there is, is the coming and going of cars fairly infrequently along, along station road, but actually in real terms, it's, it's, it will be a very good residential environment akin to, you know, what's, what surrounds it.
Okay, thank you. There being no more questions for you, I expect you'll be relieved, Mr Brockbank, to know that you can go back to your seat.
Thank you.
And we councillors will start the, looking at our report, which is on page 25.
Chair, excuse me, would it be a reasonable time to take a quick comfort break for anybody?
I need to take legal advice on this, comfort break?
If essential, Chair, you can use the discretion, it's not normal, however, to have a break in the middle of the evening, like, it's not, I would normally advise.
Well, it poses difficult legal problems, doesn't it?
Chair, the obvious point is that if people leave the room, the discussions can be had outside of the committee, that's not something we'd recommend, so I wouldn't advise a break unless it's essential for.
Is it essential, councillor McLean? Okay, okay, didn't hear you. Principal of Development on page 25. We have spent a long time on this, and on Monday at the site visit, two hours, and questions a day, so it could be that we don't need to ask questions because we have answers to everything we wish to query. Are there any questions for Principal Development? If not, then we'll go to impact on character and appearance of the area on page 28 and 29. The South Downs National Park. Page 30, the historic environment. It also goes on to, much further on, to page 33. Any questions on neighbouring amenity? We have asked some already this morning. Okay, right. Ecology and biodiversity? I have flagged up, you would expect, the issue of swifts, and councillor McLean, as we would all expect, will say that they've got enough swifts in Bishopswortham, but there are, there is a national and local decline of swifts, but I just wanted to make sure that, it's a very large site, so that all the biodiversity is covered, like burrow boxes and hedgehog gaps and so on. Rose, I forgot to ask you apologies, whether you had anything to update from the public speaking, I'll leave you with those two areas.
Thank you, Chair. Just to answer your ecology question, if I can draw your attention to the update sheet, the ecology assessment that was submitted does recommend a number of bird boxes, and this is secured by condition 21, and I have suggested including an extra half a sentence as part of that condition to include the provision of swift boxes within the amount of bird boxes that would be provided as part of the ecological mitigation suggested in that report.
I found the swift boxes, but I haven't found the hedgehog gaps, and that would be just covered, would it?
There's nothing specifically in the report, however, if you feel that it's required, I guess, condition.
The species that are under threat are bats, swifts, bats we've covered, swifts we've got a comment on, but hedgehogs and burrows are the other ones that, because of change in habitat, need support to survive. Will those, will provision be made for those species?
The report suggests a range of size bird boxes that would accommodate all bird species, in this case I've specified swift boxes, but I could amend it to include other species as well. The report isn't specific about what kind of bird boxes are provided, just that a range of sizes to facilitate all size birds. There's nothing within the report regarding specifically hedgehogs, but we could include within condition 21 as provision of hedgehog gaps as well.
Do we need agreement to that?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor McLean, I did see your hand go up, or, right, so we've done ecology and biodiversity. Then we come to drainage. Councillor Leaming?
Thank you. Phosphates, has there any conclusion on what we should be looking at on that?
Thank you, Chair. The application is outside of the River Itchen catchment, so in this case phosphates are not something that, phosphate mitigation is not required as part of this application.
Yeah, it still goes into the ham or it goes into the supplement, doesn't it? That's why I raised that.
It does, at present, it's only the River Itchen that is required to provide phosphate mitigation, and we have secured under page, bear with me. On page 46, under condition 17, is the nitrate mitigation which is required as part of this application.
Thank you, Chair. The worry I have is, I'm, my other sort of Bishopswortham hat is I'm a part, a member of the North Pond Conservation Group, and, which is the one to the north of the South Pond. We have, over the last five years, had two major flooding events within Bishopswortham. We also, just before that, had another flooding event that flooded the High Street, and also there's another little river that runs around the side of it called the River of the Lord, that runs around it and then runs back in the palace ruins and then out again into the area of the culvert we're talking about. So I'm just a little, and also the depth of the South Pond is now probably no more than about a metre and a bit, and I'm a bit concerned that we've put, we're putting all these wonderful plans in place and everybody's doing lots of talking, but nobody seems to be doing an awful lot of measuring, that is my worry. We're saying, you know, we've consulted rivers, EA, da-di-da-di-da, but I'm not seeing any concrete figures, I'm just seeing opinions, and that concerns me a little bit. I'd like that dug a little bit deeper by someone, get to the end of it, thank you.
I keep forgetting to put my microphone on. Do you have anything to add, Rose?
Thank you, Chair. As I understand it, the pond is within the applicant's ownership, but it's not part of this specific application, so my knowledge of its maintenance and future maintenance is very limited. All I can suggest is that the maintenance of this pond will be subject to applications to be agreed by the Environment Agency under flooding legislation, to make sure that everything does work as it's supposed to and will be maintained in a way that will avoid flooding as much as possible.
Sorry, Chair, how will we get firm information on it? What you've said is, I understand it, it doesn't present us with any facts that are going to present the site that is now, is going to be below it from these serious floods, and we have seen them firsthand in the village.
As I say, councillor, unfortunately, because it's outside of this red line plan, I don't have information before me, but any works would be subject to further investigation and part of their maintenance of the pond, I would imagine, to be agreed with the Environment Agency and presumably other statutory bodies that are not part of this application.
Right, so if we finish with drainage, moving on to landscape and trees, and indeed other topics, if you leave it up. Councillor Westwood?
I do have another query directed at the officer, if that's okay, related to a comment made by the, so when I asked the question around heating, the comment was made that ground source heat pump couldn't go in the open space because of a scheduled ancient monument. When I read the document, I thought I read that that area was countryside, when I looked at the map, I thought the scheduled ancient monument didn't cover that entire open space. Does one clarification, is it, is it countryside on the open space or scheduled ancient monument?
It's both, so the area of public open space known as the Abbey Field, it is outside of the settlement boundary, so under our policy, it's classified as countryside, however, you can still be countryside and covered under scheduled monument status or even conservation area status, which is the case in this area. So the Abbey Field, which is the proposed public open space, is both scheduled monument and conservation area, so any works to it would be subject to scheduled monument consent by Historic England. so any works to it would be subject to scheduled monument consent by Historic England.
Okay, could we just flick back to the map that showed the boundary? No, it had the lines on, a fairly early slide you showed. That's the one, no, forward. Okay, so it's all in that hatched area, isn't it?
It is, yes.
Just wanted to understand.
Did I see someone's hand? Yeah, Council McLean.
Thank you, it's public health, which I think you said in the other subject. I spoke to the GP surgery in the village yesterday, because I have a concern that the GP surgery is not going to be big enough to work with the development, with another, possibly up to a hundred people needing to join the figures. So, I spoke to one of the doctors there, and I said, you know, if I just read this out to you, can you comment back to me on it? And it says in the report, line five, 'local authority is responsible for ensuring sufficient medical care provision within the district and is aiding the existing surgery.' That is not the case. Case is, a conversation is being had with local authorities. Not aiding, but a conversation is being had, which is very different. I just think that needs to be recorded, change of wording.
Rose, do you want to answer it?
Thank you for the clarification, councillor. My understanding was that the local health authority was helping find a GP surgery, but if that's not the case, I do apologise and...
Always a contentious item when you have a large number of houses or a large number of people. And, but it isn't, we don't have to, as the city council provided, just help. And it doesn't help in this instance that the previous application was going to allocate land for a doctor's surgery, which is now not part of this application. So, all we can do is what it says in the report. Not ideal. So, any other questions on these last pages or the conditions? Debate, oh, sorry, Council Westwood.
Sorry, conditions, you said questions on conditions. I was flicking through, looking for, back to my hobby horse, the energy efficiency standards that we wanted the building to, and I couldn't see them. Could you just possibly point me at the condition around that?
So, in this case, we have two. We have Condition Number Seven on page forty-two, which is details of the design stage requiring compliance with Policy CP eleven. And then further on, on page forty-six, we have the as-built details to be secured as well.
Okay, councillor? Yeah, okay, thank you. So, no further questions, so councillor Rutter? Want to debate? I declare debate. Councillor Pearson. And then councillor Rutter.
Thank you, councillor Pearson, I did, thank you. I'd like to commend Beethroff, the developer, for the, for this proposal and for working so closely with officers to get this right. And I think that as much as we could ask for is being provided within this development around the care home and the assisted living. And we all know how much demand there is for that sort of housing and that sort of provision in the whole district, so I welcome that. I also welcome the non-designated historic asset, the old mill building. Not only is being retained and restored and repurposed, but also that the rest of the development is taking its design cue from this building. And so that feeling of the old industrial mill is actually being reflected through most of the rest of the development, which I very much appreciate and commend and welcome. I would ask the developer to consider an access path. I know that there is a level change, but I think from the farthest corner where the residential housing is, I suspect that the residents themselves will probably make an access to that public footpath, even if you don't. And it might be better if it's done properly right from the start. The pond, I think it's very much in the applicant's interest to ensure that it's properly maintained and legally the dam is properly maintained, because if it's not, you know, it's going to be disastrous. So, I have full confidence that that will happen, but Council McLean was absolutely right to raise this as a very important issue. The crossing issue is, I'm afraid it's a matter that the county council has declared that they do not consider that there will be enough extra pedestrian traffic across the Winchester Road to merit a new pedestrian crossing, pelican-style crossing. I know that none of us here would agree with that. And we also are very concerned that the county council is assuming that a lot of these new residents won't actually be wanting to access Bishop's Waltham shopping area or restaurants or pubs or anything else, which I think, I think we are hoping that they will, and they will be well enough to do that, and that we should facilitate as much as possible their access of the rest of the community. And I accept that there is a lot of SIL, and I hope that the county council and the parish council will take this up and put in a crossing using the resources that are coming forward through SIL to the community to do that. So, I very much commend a crossing, a proper crossing, but I accept that it's not this developer's responsibility to provide it. The open space, I think ideally it should be managed by the parish council, but I understand why the development, the developers want it to be properly maintained and therefore want to keep it under the management company. In the future, probably it will go to the parish council in the shorter term, say the next ten years. Will be the responsibility of the management company. But I do want full open and public access to the whole site. I would suggest that you ask for a bin, a dog poo bin at the entrance to it. And I think that has covered all the points I wanted to make, yes. So, I very much support the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, it's, to me, it's a well-put-together application. It ticks most, if not all, the boxes. Perhaps one could comment about fine detail. I am concerned about security residence and the suggestion that there should be free access for members of the public across the site to the open space does not strike me as being creating guarded space for residents who are not one hundred per cent fit. There are issues with that. That's not part of the planning application, but there have been comments about that actually in this meeting. I'm also concerned, I was with Mr, Council McLean, about the public health aspect. Bishop's Waltham's had five hundred houses put into its area in the last tranche of housing. We now have this care home and the additional need for public health for those people, but there have been no changes to the surgery within Bishop's Waltham. Now, this again is not part of the planning application, but I think it is something that should be said. Hopefully, the health service has its hearing aid in, because so far, they're not listening to the requirements of the village. We've had similar situations in the past in Wickham, as the chairman is very well aware. Now, access again is saying very loudly to the county on this occasion, if people are going to be walking from this site, as hopefully many will, into the village town, never quite sure how to describe Bishop's Waltham, medieval village, how about that? Medieval village which is now disguised as a town, then they are going to take the shortest route, which means that going across via the refuge by Sainsbury's, they're not going to walk down to the roundabout, which for some reason the county highways have this naive belief that that is what they're going to do. They're going to take the shortest route. That is what people do, and that is via the refuge. I crossed there a couple of times myself, and it is, shall we say, an interesting situation, even with that refuge there. So, I hope the county thinks again. Mr Brookbank said quite, commented that there is SIL money available. Now, okay, suggestion that is, some of it should be at least spent on that. There is talk within Rose's report about use of one-of-six money and so on. I hope that actually comes to fruition, because the last time the county made highways made promises about crossings, they did this at Swamford, and that crossing is still not in place two years after that application went through. The, so that's the access point. The flooding point, one in one thousand year flooding, I don't know why somebody's come up with this sort of thing. I know it's relatively raw risk, one would say, but one in one thousand year flooding. We know the climate's changing. The Met Office is talking about one in fifty years storms and flooding. Not one thousand years, for goodness sake. We're not talking about building something in aid of William Jacob Normandy's kingdom. We're talking about now Elizabeth the Second, what the weather is like on this occasion, and indeed the climate is like. I'm a bit nervous of that, and if that pond is not maintained, if it's allowed to get shallower and shallower, as we know it is in this area, we discussed this with the Sainsbury's application. I know it's a different application before I get shot down by Mrs Sutherland, but it's still relevant. Just that dam is still relevant, and that's got to be protected. And I think, as we did with the North Pond, there's some dredging of that silt out of that. South Pond has got to take place. I know the fisherfolk won't like it, they've just got to accept it for flood control. The archaeology, I like what is said about the archaeology, fresh and raised in the site visit. There is potential there. I don't know whether Abbey Field was originally used for jousting prior to the Duke of Cavalry from William, sorry, Oliver Cromwell, who decided they didn't like the architecture, the palace and buried damn thing down. But they were suitably punished, as I understand it. But there may well be archaeology. I understand from the site visit that it's not a one hundred per cent cover. There will be investigation, that's conditioned. Great. The ecology and biodiversity, I like this package, which it does include habitats which will allow biodiversity to come back onto this site, which has been absent for a very long time. Must admit, I read the comment about the Great Crescent of Newt's that Rose put in the thing, that it was commented that Sainsbury's had the Great Crescent of Newt's, and we started to look for them on the site, we couldn't find them. Clearly, they'd moved off the site, perhaps the habitat was wrong, or perhaps even they would never have been there in the first place. Badgers said, well, badgers will roam, they roam quite a distance, and that's got to be protected somehow. I know some farmers don't like badgers, I won't go into that. But flooding to me, and access to the town, let me remind people of Farringdon, where the developers refused to listen to local knowledge. Now, I know you guys are not doing it, but saying generally, they refused to take, and they got the housing built where they wanted it built, and the year after completion, as people were moving in, we had a major flood, the result of which every house they'd built had to be pulled down and put in the place it should have been in the first place. And I do not want that to happen with a care home. You'd be more than covered in brown effluent, but if that does happen, and that is crucial, I think, to this site. I like the development though, and, thank you, Rose, good report, detailed report, very useful. And thanks, sir, for your input as well. That was very useful and very helpful, both of you. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Pearson. Councillor Rutter, you have spoken, sorry. I just lost touch with reality for a moment. Councillor McLean. Yeah, Councillor Clea, then Councillor Levinge.
Thank you, Chair. I think this thing with the crossing from, shall we say, the south side of the road to the north side of the road, let's keep it really simple and take the care home development out of it. Of the five hundred houses, a heck of a lot of those houses have been built to the north, sorry, to the west of Bishop's Waltham. Now, anybody that's going to cycle, walk, or whatever to get from those houses on the walking and cycle track that was designed in, when the design statement was done by the parish council, will follow that route. Strangely enough, they'll go past the south, between the south and the north pond, they will end up opposite Sainsbury's. Now, there might not be enough residents in the care home development to warrant a crossing, but there is in the rest of the village, and Hampshire County Council very conveniently, I think, missed out on that, and it just needs to be picked up in the report. There are, I think it's, I can't think, we've got three major developments done. We've just done Martin Street, we're just about to do another one. Those guys have got to walk, following councillor Westwood's point, or cycle into the centre of Bishop's Waltham. That really does need to be put back on the agenda, if we may, as part of the application. That is my only worry about it. The rest of the application, I think, is superb. And sadly, the pond needs looking at, because that's where the brown stuff will come from, if it ever does. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I just ask the other county, two councillors on the list. I agree with you, Councillor McLean. We don't normally challenge the county, and we don't have the right to challenge them anyway, because they are the highway authority, but what, the point that you're making is very valid, because we have given permission to a large number of houses up towards Winchester, and they will come down, and they will cross this road, very busy road, here. Is there anything we could do to say, you know, the, what we've discussed in committee or?
Yeah, Chair, and I think, again, to the county council, we know this is a sort of a passionate members of this committee, local residents. I think the county council, I would say, do recognise, and I think they would like to see a crossing there. What the position is here is this scheme doesn't justify making a contribution to it or requiring it in planning terms, and that's where we are. I think you heard from the agent that there will be a SIL contribution. The county council are going to explore how they bring that together separately, but it's just this scheme that's not, you know, not a requirement for this scheme, to make this scheme otherwise acceptable. And that's always our test, isn't it, when we're deciding whether it's reasonable and proportionate to take either an off-site contribution or condition something. And in this case, the county council is saying there's not a justification for that, so we have no power to require it, Chair.
My sadness with this, my sadness with this, Chair, is when I first joined this committee, so I don't know how many years ago, we used to have, on applications like this, a member of Hampshire Highways. Or we had our own highways expert as well, would be sitting here and answering the questions. And it would be able to sort of cross-examine, cross-examine is the wrong word, but question their decision. We can no longer do that. On an application of this size, I think, I know we have to pay for it now, but it might be worthwhile getting someone from the highways authority to discuss it with us or talk to us. It's, we're talking about it, but it's pointless.
We have a county councillor in the room who I'm sure is listening. But can we require, or can we just send to the county the message that we would support the use of SIL money to restore the crossing?
Chair, and I think they're aware of that, but there's no reason why the case officer can't go back and feed that back, but we can't make a requirement of this app.
I think I speak for all of the committee here. Yeah, they're all nodding.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, noted.
Right, so, but. Councillor Clea?
Thank you, Chair. I think councillor Pearson's covered a lot of what I was going to say, and he did it so well, as he always does, so I won't go through everything, but the application is a good application. I'm not saying it isn't. And I know we keep on about the pedestrian crossing, and everything appears to be well-covered, but that to me... But that to me is a great disappointment. Hampshire County Council, I won't say what I would like to say because I'd probably get my wrist slapped. But I think a crossing is necessary there. That road, I tried to cross it very recently. And why you think, or Hampshire County Council seem to think there won't be enough people going backwards and forwards. Is it because, and I will say it, that there's a care home there? So those people are elderly and won't be coming out? I don't know. Or is it money? I don't know, probably is. But please, I support everything the Chair has said and all the councillors regarding the crossing. But apart from that, a good application, everything else well covered and I do support the recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Leamie, then followed by councillor Westwood.
Thank you Chair. I also support the crossing. I think it's fundamental. This whole area, it needs one, whether this care home is there or not. I think it should be conditioned in. Two other main worries. One is the actual maintenance of the pond and the dam. And I think that needs to be looked at. And we start looking at the houses. I wish that they would be built to a better environmental standard and ground source heat pumps can be put in on that estate by the looks of it without going on to the heritage site. I think the officer's done a very good job of giving us a full report and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you councillor Westwood.
Thank you Chair. And I'll keep this brief as well. I will be supporting this, I think it's a good scheme. And, you know, I thank the officer and I thank the developer for coming forward with the scheme that they put forward to us today. I will add my voice vocally again. I believe crossing for these, the community there and the broader community further out is essential on that road. And I would urge the parish council and the county councillor for that area to actively press that point forwards and see that this is, this is put in place. I understand that we, it is not strictly part of this development, but it is needed. Secondly, you know, I've talked a lot about the energy efficiency carbon footprint. I would urge you, when you're developing the site, to, you know, understand that our local plan will be changing going forwards. It would be fantastic if you could build to code five. That is where we want to go for it too and possibly beyond. With the cost of energy at the moment, which all of us in this room are experiencing, it's vital that we should build properly and energy efficient and that we move away from fossil fuel powering for energy. So I urge you to have a good look at the options. Options are air source, ground source. I think ground source would provide better form of energy source for that development over air source, which has got all sorts of issues with efficiency and cold weather and it's got noise associated with it. Ground source actually removes some of those issues. So please look at it seriously and see if you can fit it into the development. Other than that, I'll be supporting it, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that was it for members of the committee. And I too would like to add a few comments. This site has been, sort of become to the consciousness of the residents of Bishopswaltham because of the last application, which was quite contentious. And that was the Sainsbury's build. And, you know, half of Bishopswaltham wanted it, half didn't. Anyway, that's fallen by the wayside. So now the attention has turned to this one. And it is a very large and tricky site really. I do support the application. I support the, you know, the different types of care. I have regrets that you put the affordable housing up in a noisy corner. It is the noisiest corner of the site. And there is a need, there is, you know, we're all living longer and people's health is declining. And we do need the assisted living and the care home. We've talked much about the crossings, but it is quite true that there will be a bulk of people using this crossing there, if there were a crossing there. But there are, there is a bulk of people who want to cross into the village at this point, at the top. I understand that we can't insist on anything which is outside the development. But if we could encourage, and I think we've agreed to do that under condition, or one of the conditions, to the county to rethink SIL money and that would be good. And I think this is a result of an enormous amount of work, both from the applicant and from the officers. And in particular, Rose and Lorna, who've had an awful lot of dialogue and communication to tweak this application to the state we've got it now. So well done to the officers and I shall be supporting the application. I think we've got to the point of getting to the vote. I think we agreed to add on something to condition, was it 21?
Chairman, do you want me to just summarise quickly the conditions? I think in the update sheet, there is a recommendation that we delete condition 31 and we add that into the heads of terms for the section 106 and also amend condition 21 to include SWIFs. And then we've also said today that we will include that there's, you know, we would ask them to make provision for hedgehog groups. So that, those were the updates Chair, thank you.
And the issue of the crossings.
Chairman, we've agreed that we'll send an email. I can send an email either in my name or from you to Hampshire to say we would actively encourage that. It can be reported in the minutes, but it wouldn't form part of the decision.
Thank you. So councillors, all those in favour of this application with the additions read out by Julie.
Thank you Chair, that's all members.
So that is agreed and approved. Thank you very much. Shall we take until quarter to for a comfort break?
Yeah.
And thank you, sorry the one, for the people who are waiting for the follow.
So, part two of the morning for the planning and development control. Of a below ground gas storage tank and electricity generation, generator. But it's, I believe, retrospective. The case officer is Hannah Harison. And Hannah's waiting there to give her report. So when you're ready, Hannah.
Thank you, Chair. I'll start by showing you the location plan. I'll go through some site photos. There is a map on the right hand bottom corner to give you an idea of where I was stood with the camera and where this site is located. Standing further down into the site looking up towards slightly closer shots. Standing near the location of the generator looking up towards the Standing at the entrance of the site. Circle there is the generator and gas. This is a photo taken from the public right of way. On to the far left you can see the circle of where the entrance of the site is. The generator in situ with an inside shot of Noted that the earthbound When the gas storage tank was installed. And the photo on the left is how
Thank you very much. So we move now to the public speaking, which I was just looking at. And the first person we have is the parish council representative, councillor Jane McCormick. So good morning to you. And I believe you're going to be speaking after this, but we'll explain that at the time. So you represent the parish council and you have three minutes. And you see the time on the screen. It won't stop after with one. It does give you the whole three minutes. So when you're ready, we're ready to hear your presentation. Could you put your microphone on? And if you could just move it slightly nearer you, that might
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Well, thank you, Chair, and good morning all of you. I'm speaking on behalf of our parish council for Wolverhampton and Meannstoke, Gerry Pett, who's away this week, and offers his apologies. An application for a tractor shed was approved back in 1994. Change of use from agricultural building to tourist accommodation in 2009. The change of use plans included the statement that mains electricity would be supplied. Then AONB, council T quoted in the report suggests the authorities seek advice regarding the variability of the proposed use, as we would not wish to see an application for conversion to a dwelling in due course. A bid for change of use to domestic dwelling duly followed in 2010, claiming that holiday let or other commercial use was unavailable, unviable. The report included the parish council's comment why this viability, asking why this viability question had not been established prior to permission being granted for change of use the previous year. 2012 saw an application for seasonal yurts and changes from holiday let to guest house or B and B accommodation. This was refused, subsequently upheld on appeal. Inspector's report in November 2013 noted that to allow this scheme would be tantamount to approving a conversion scheme that is suitable for occupation as a Class C three dwelling house. Also that if it's not possible to accommodate the proposed enterprise in a satisfactory manner, that it could lead to pressure for additional buildings on the site. Though to the present applications, both the result of enforcement action, the parish council assumed that from the approved 2010 plans, the site had a main supply. But the applicant has confirmed that it has never had a names, main supply. Now rather than being a separate new application for generator, which was installed and has run since last year, this is really a change to plans approved 11 years ago, for use for which it has never been used, shown to be unviable without a main supply. The approved use of holiday let has never been achieved. It is no surprise to the council that, as inspector predicted, there is now pressure for these additional developments to develop on site. Building a tractor shed on a countryside plot is a not unknown first step. It is often followed by development of a later proved to be unviable business use. The ultimate goal is, of course, a residential dwelling that would otherwise not be permitted. You will, I'm sure, be aware of other examples. The planning inspector has already indicated that Meann Bosgate should not progress down this path. We urge you to reject your officer's recommendation in both cases. If you are unwilling to do that, then, if I have succeeded in raising any doubts in your minds at all, we ask that you direct that the case be referred to the South Downs Planning Committee.
Thank you very much. It could be that members of the committee have some clarification questions to ask you. Are there any questions for councillor McCormick, councillor Rutter?
And our report says that there is mains electricity. So why does the parish council think that there isn't?
Because we're told there isn't. They've got a generator, which is on, and upsetting neighbours who hear it all the time.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, I don't think that question either answered either as to whether there is mains electric or not.
I will ask the officer in due course.
Any further questions? Right, so that's the end of your bit. But the ward, one of the ward councillors, councillor Hugh Lumby, who's here today, wishes to make a contribution to this report. Councillor Lumby, would you like to come forward because there might be some clarification questions? So councillor McCourtmark is now taking her parish council hat off. And she's acting as the speaker for councillor Lumby, who's had a serious operation and is literally unable to speak. So councillor McCormick, you have five minutes on behalf of councillor Lumby. So when you're ready. And then if there are any questions, we'll ask the questions and councillor Lumby can indicate to you what the answers will be.
And thank you, Chair, and good morning all. First, a word of apology for the slightly strange method of communication. As the chair explained, I have a major ENT issue and am required to rest my voice box, in the hope that it heals itself without the need of an operation. I will try to answer questions if you have any. Just be aware, it sounds very odd. Still, as one of my neighbours said, a silent councillor is his sort of councillor. I am speaking as one of the Winchester city councillors of the upper Meann Valley ward. I don't know why the agenda says that the application site is in Bishopswaltham. It most assuredly is not. It is in the village where I live and I know the site well. Rather like the parish council, I would like to speak in relation to both this and the other Meann Bosgate applications together. Because this is the reality here. There is an ongoing process to seek to move this site from tourism to permanent residence. And it is time to draw a line in the sand. First, a bit about the site. It is directly adjoining the river Meann. Don't be fooled by the red line being drawn away from the river. If you look at the history of the site on page 89, you will see consent for a riverside deck area. And yes, that is another example of the applicant building without consent. These two applications are. Members will recall the motion passed at the last council meeting about the importance of protecting our rivers, and the Meann is no exception. This site is special. As I mentioned in my referral, water voles are our fastest declining mammal. The population here is increasing, following a release five years ago. These aren't even mentioned in the report. And yet here they are, putting gas tanks in the ground near the S I N C. Imagine the impact of any link. Why is it going in? Because the applicants refuse to spend the money to connect to the mains. What's more important here? Water voles and the protection of our rivers, or someone trying to cut costs and not connect to the mains? And then there is the generator which is already creating noise. Report says it is for standby only, but there is no mains here. So there's every chance it's going to be running all the time. The proposed bond has now been removed, so all noise protection, apart from some wooden fencing, has gone. There isn't even a planning condition to maintain that, despite it being a consideration in recommending approval. This needs addressing if you decide to approve this application. The environmental health officer has not objected, because they say that it does not impact on neighbouring amenities or the tranquility of the rural location. The neighbours who can hear it do not agree. I submit that it is them who are having their amenity adversely affected. This application should be rejected as a breach of S D seven. You can see the picture of the shed that has been built. It is wholly without merit. It is, in my view, in breach of S D twenty-three, S D twenty-five. It does nothing to conserve and enhance the natural beauty, wildlife and cultural heritage of the area. And it falls foul of S D four by not being of the highest possible quality. And certainly does not enhance the landscape character in the national park. As we have said, the concern here is the incremental move to progress towards a permanent residence. Indeed, that may already be happening. If not, why has the same car been parked on site since last November? Indeed, I saw it there when I cycled past on Monday. This is meant to be tourist accommodation. Then surely the cars would change with different visitors. It is time to say enough is enough and to reject this process of building, then applying for consent if caught, going for lawful development if not, all the time moving towards a permanent residence. I urge the committee to reject the recommendations, turn down both applications. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lumby, as it were. Any questions for councillor Lumby? Councillor Pearson?
Yeah, it's a question which I think Mrs McCormick can answer as well. I know you speak in behalf of councillor Lumby, but I'm pretty sure the answer will be the same. I'm a little bit puzzled by this application. Isn't actually a house, residential house on this property or not? on this property or not? Shake your head if it's not, or nod if it's.
There is a house.
There is a house?
It's tourist accommodation.
Right, okay.
It was photographed as a mannequin property.
It's been built as tourist...
There, the middle.
Built as tourist accommodation.
Councillor Pearson, for the sake of the public...
It's being built as tourist accommodation.
That's right.
Councillor Pearson, for the sake of the public recording, could you just briefly say what you think the answer to your question was?
Yes, I asked the question, first, is there a house on the property?
We heard your question, is the answer?
Yes, and I'm just going to give the answer now. And clearly, we've been shown by Hannah that there is a property on the house. My next question was, is this built for tourist accommodation or not? And I think the answer was, it is tourist accommodation. Thank you.
Yep, yeah. Councillor Lumby's nodding. Councillor Rutter?
I understand that you're saying that local residents' neighbours can hear the generator. I know that these generators can be incredibly noisy, but on the plan that we've got in front of us that shows Chapel Road and the river, and the dwelling and the red line and everything, there are no nearby neighbours. So can you just tell me how close the nearest neighbours are?
They're one paddock away from...
And they can hear the generator?
Yes, it echoes down the valley.
Any further questions? Councillor Clea?
Thank you, Chair. I was just querying as I'm looking through the environmental health section there, and it says, I note that the electricity generator may produce some noise, but as this is for standby purposes only, it should be minimal. I would just like to... Standby purposes? But you're saying it's on all the time? I'm just querying that.
As I understand it, there is, they are not connected to the mains, and so they're using, they've been using it for a year. And I've spoken to one of the closest neighbours, and they are bothered by it. And there are lights on there, you know, at night, so it is being used. But I don't think it'd be used for tourist accommodation, because you would have to have mains connected, because you'd need that washing machine, all kinds of things.
Any, is that it for questions for councillor Lumby? Thank you very much. Speedy recovery, councillor Lumby. So we now move to, we now move to supporters, and we have Kimblund, the agent, and Mr Dredge, the applicant. Are you both speaking? Anyway, you just have the three minutes allocated. I haven't seen any photos of you. Oh, they're the ones in the report. You have three minutes, you may share that, or one of you just use the three minutes as you wish, and you may both then answer questions if there are any.
Immediately, it's helpful if we just... Things. So the building that's there was not a house, it's a tractor shed, very substantial, brick-built tractor shed.
Sorry, Chair, is this part of the three minutes? Because I've just started.
Yes, it is, yes.
So we'll pretend you haven't said that. Strange morning today, and we, your three minutes starts now.
Okay. So I think it's important for us to clarify that the building that was there is a tractor shed that was put up in the 1990s. It's brick-built, it's substantial, it has a reasonably good roof, although it is shingled, but field roof. Come on to that later. It was a tractor shed, it was used as a tractor shed by my client and his family for many, many years. But they, my client's father passed away, and the family, the sons are working, and therefore they just tried to maintain it. They wanted to make good use of the tractor shed, and it was converted to tourist use. That permission is implemented and it's extant. So it's not a dwelling as such, although I accept that tourist use is, you know, tourist accommodation is a residential use. It is a tourist unit. Now, it is not yet let, because the completion was, the conversion of the tractor building would only finish this September. I appreciate it's been a long time since the permission granted and the conversion work finished, but, you know, my client works, he needed to gather the funds, the economic climate hasn't been good, and it's also given him time to really consider, you know, obviously times are changing, and there are problems with our power supply, with our energy supply, you know, nobody can be unaware of that, and this is even a year ago, he had the good sense to consider those options of going for renewable energy and trying to, you know, create climate change. So that's why some of the way of operating the facility, you know, what we're doing for it is changing.
The way it's going to be set up, the solar will produce the power for 99% of the energy needed. I've got a report from the solar company that in very depths of winter, the solar won't produce much, the generator will be needed. Through the sort of four or five months of the summer, when most of my letting will be, yeah, generator will not be...
It's got battery, it's got battery storage, you see?
It hasn't at the moment. Until I can put the solar on and put the battery storage in, I can only use the generator as and when. It's not orderable from my neighbours, they're 300 metres away. That is not stating the truth.
Yes, so the lights are only on in the building, there is no external lighting, as far as I'm aware, unless there was a little bit of external lighting production work was taking place to undertake the conversion. But as, we've gone over our three minutes, it's not timing, is it?
You've got another 20 seconds, yeah?
Oh, okay, fine, yeah. So, so, yes, the environmental health officer was happy that this is a standby generator, it's not to be operated all the time. The power will be mainly generated by the solar panels, which are going to be stored under permitted development rights with a battery storage pack-up, that's where most of the power will come from. Gas is just needed for heating and hot water, so that's...
Thank you, Chair, that's three minutes.
Councillor, councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. Talking to... What size solar?
Got a five kilowatt going on. House is set up to be very low energy. Lighting is going to be set up as low energy. All the equipment will be running off LPG, the current... It will have a 10 kilowatt storage battery. The solar experts that I've suggested that in reasonable summer weather, the solar will produce enough power to charge up the battery, sense your heat, how many kilowatts?
Thank you very much. Any further questions? Have you got another question?
If I can.
No, I thought you said thank you and it was a sign-off thank you.
We keep hearing mains power being mentioned. Yes, there is, no, there isn't. Definite answer, is there or isn't there?
When we first made the application, a neighbour agreed to allow us a way leave across their land. They backtracked at the, when I started the mission at some point last year, and that has then caused me to go seek our routes off to other neighbours. They've turned me down. I have no other alternative. I'm a, I've converted the building, and at that stage, the place was 80, 90% completed, and I actually have no solution, other than an off-grid proposal. What I've done is mitigated so that the generator will run to an absolute minimum, and the solar experts are suggesting that something in the region of 100 hours a year. I use my lawnmower for 50 hours a year. I, I don't think this is reasonable, unreasonable. The property, I'm surrounded on three, by three neighbours.
Well, you're not, there's some distance.
Yes, sorry, in fact, the nearest neighbour's 300 metres away. So any, any statement that they can hear or hear it is actually untrue. I can't hear the building.
Actually, councillor Rutter, I'm sorry, but modern generators are actually very quiet, and I've been there when it's been operating. I was surprised they're quiet again.
Any further questions? Councillor Lea?
It shouldn't operate during the night. It's just a standby.
Yeah, but we've heard that it's operating throughout the night.
It's 68 decibels. It's 68 decibels at the machine. It's in an acoustic enclosure with 100mm of acoustic rock wool. If you go back to the inside, you see that the inside of the fence is lined with black plastic, behind that is acoustic rock wool. What you're looking at on the, you can see the generator, and the black shiny plastic behind that is 100mm of acoustic rock.
Yeah, but what about the roof?
It's noise-tense.
Yeah, that wasn't required by the landscape officer. What the landscape officer wanted, that the trees deaden any other, any discernible noise is deadened by the surroundings. Need a cover, can you put a cover on it? Does it generate heat?
It does generate some heat.
Yeah, so you wouldn't have a, you'd need to ventilate it.
Councillor Westwood?
Yeah, a quick, simple question, Chair. What powers the generator? Is it the LPG or a different fuel source?
The answer is that the generator is powered by the LPG, the gas.
Well, thank you, councillor Rutter. And I believe you want to speak now.
Yes, well, my question has already been covered, I believe. I was going to ask, would it help with the sound attenuation if a roof was put on the fencing around it? But I think you've answered that question, although, I mean, I would like to see a roof on it, but would that, I mean, would that mean it would need extra ventilation of some kind if it was on it?
Potentially, I think it would do, and of course, I would then need further planning permission for that.
Would it then become the structure?
I think that's it for questions. Hannah, was there anything you wanted to say in the light of everybody's...
I just wanted, you know, if the generator creates a structural nuisance, environmental health of other people, they should deal with that. So I think, given that they haven't raised any of concern here, obviously, if local residents do report that there's a noise nuisance, they can investigate that using other...
Yes, indeed, and can I just say to the residents, local residents, that they need to contact environmental health if they are disturbed by the noise, and they will investigate it, because it's already there, it's retrospective. Right, so we turn to the report, and that starts on page 93. It isn't, thank you very much for coming. It isn't a long report, so shall we just ask questions on anything? Councillor McLean? Well, that's okay, we haven't got into that. You have a question for the applicant?
Yes, a really simple question, if I may. We're looking at this as a retrospective application. Why are we looking at a retrospective application? Why didn't you apply through the correct process? That's because that is one of the things, member of this committee, Father Grum.
I can be absolutely clear, I was in negotiations with the one landowner, who said they were very happy for us to put the connection across their land, and it took me seven or eight months for them to finally say, no, we're not. By that time, the building was more or less completed, I had mushrooms growing inside of it, and I needed to get some heat into it. I was, I was led up the garden path by them, but I, I don't suspect they probably had any intention of signing the way leave, but they didn't say that to me in the early stages.
It's just that my worry is, there is a process, the correct process to follow. You could have put a heater building, keep it from going, growing mushrooms, and then the process would have been followed. Yes, it would have taken time. As a councillor, I have to apply for planning permission, I want work on my property. I just, I just find it a little bit difficult to swallow.
Yeah, my client understands that he should have, you know, that was the correct way of doing it, working quickly on his feet at the time. He does know that that is the correct way.
Okay, thank you very much for bringing that up. We all know that there is nothing to stop people implementing their applications, but it is at their own risk, and they might not get permission, so they are here asking for permission today. Right, page 93, and it goes on a couple of pages off to page 95. Any questions on any part?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not sure whether I should be asking this question at this point, but you can correct me if I'm wrong. The property is, has permission for tourist use, and I think that's one of the questions that we should be addressing here. There's a question of noise, and there's a question of the use of the building, and the concerns that were expressed that it's moving towards a permanent residence. What are the implications of having permission for tourist use if it's not used for tourist use? Can it be enforced? Is my question probably for Mrs Pennock?
Chair, I'm happy to pick it up. I mean, it's not the subject of this application, but in 2009, planning permission was granted for the use for tourist accommodation, there's a condition that requires it to be used for those purposes. I think what you've heard from the agent and applicant today is that they've only, September 21, completed it, haven't let it out yet. The lawful use, authorised use of it is for holiday accommodation, any other use would require a planning permission.
May I just follow up on that? So does that give you permission to use it as residence whilst it's being constructed? In other words, now?
Not in my view, Chair, no.
No, I'd agree with that. I mean, the planning permission is quite created for tourist accommodation only, and any other use would potentially be, you know, for enforcement, or obviously the chance to put in an application. Generally, that's not what we're looking at, we are looking at something that has an approved use for tourist accommodation.
Yeah, thank you, I understand that, and it's like talking about the noise and Mrs Pennock telling us that there are other means of enforcement for the noise, similarly, there's other means of enforcement for the use, is what you're telling me.
Yeah, the noise comes under environmental health, um, yeah. Um, and any change in what they've got permission, was it a certificate of lawful development?
No, Chair, it was in 2009, there was a planning permission, I think.
Didn't come to committee.
Yeah, no, it, it was 2009, um, alterations to allow the change of use of the agricultural building, existing access parking and turning areas to forest accommodation. That was approved.
Right. Any change that there would be to that permission would need another application.
That's right, Chair.
Councillor Rutter?
Chair, would it be helpful if Mrs Pennick explained to members exactly what the conditions attaching to that planning application are in terms of how a holiday accommodation is different from residential accommodation?
It's tricky, I'm happy to have a go. Um, I, I was looking at the planning decision and it was in 2009 and the condition I gave it to you. There's a condition that says the converted building hereby permitted shall not be occupied at any other, at any time other than for the purposes of holiday accommodation. Shall at no time be occupied as a domestic dwelling house. That's what the condition says. So we would, you know, if, if there was an allegation that it was being used as a domestic dwelling, investigate that and take a view on that, Chair.
Do, did that condition, sorry to Chair, if I may, did that condition not, often these days, we include, you know, for no longer than a particular amount of time at a time and not returning within a time and, and, and records to be kept and so on. Is, is that not in that condition?
It's not in that condition, no, I'm afraid.
Um, I, I did actually notice that there were no dates down under the planning history. It is useful to have dates allocated to permissions. Sometimes they're very old and, you know, irrelevant.
No, agreed, Chair, we'll make sure that happens in future.
Um, councillor Leamy?
Whilst you're looking at the previous permission on this, was it a condition that it was linked to the mains?
Oh, Chair, because that wouldn't be a reasonable condition, it's not a material planning consideration.
And can I remind councillors that we're actually looking at this application, which is the below-ground gas storage tank and electricity generator? Um, can we then look at the, um, the report? Any questions? Don't I ask a question? We've heard that some residents have problems with noise. Um, I couldn't see any comment from the National Park. It's just because they assume, Hannah, that everything's okay.
Chairman, if I might answer for Hannah there, the National Park delegate the function to us to make the planning decision, so it wouldn't be one that they would take back and they, they look, they screen applications to decide if there's anything they would like to deal with themselves if they consider that to be what they call significant. Um, we do have a link officer that we work with regularly that Hannah and, and the team liaise with. Um, however, this is one that the National Park are happy for us to continue to assess and determine, and it triggers a committee, we might actually have our procedures and they're happy for the committee to make this decision.
Thank you. And could I just ask about the comment from the landscape officer about the bund? Did the bund end up being changed to what the officer wanted?
Thank you, Chair. Um, so yes, as you can see from my photograph on the location, it originally did have an earth bund and the landscape officer suggested for it to be a fence. And the applicant has actually removed the bund completely now, so. I could just show you the applicant's photos.
Sorry, Chair, we're just going to toggle back to the, the applicant's photos again, so we just need to upload them. Just bear with us for a moment.
Sorry, Chair, so if I can just show you this photograph here, the earth bund has been removed completely now. It's as has, it is as what the landscape officer.
Any further questions? Councillor Westwood?
Thank you. Um, just a question on the trees, on the plot. Um, we've heard that solar panels are proposed to be put onto the roof. Is there any protection for any of the trees? Should they be in the way of solar panels? So my question is, on that particular plot, is, are there any tree protection orders?
Chair, if I could answer the question. Um, there's no actual tree protection orders placed on the site. Um, however, a tree report was submitted with the application, which is not in the report. On page 93, um, the applicant had a tree report presented by the Treescape Company, um, and they've said, stated that the trees on site are not of significant relevance should any fall naturally, nor any required to be removed for the solar panels to actually work.
Mr Dredge, I noticed that you've returned to the, the speaker's seat, but I'm afraid you've had your three minutes. Sorry about that. Um, councillor Pearson?
Yeah, the, I see the application is about the burial of this, this gas tank. How long has that gas tank actually been in this location?
It's been present for the application itself. And obviously it was present on site.
So when you took photographs of the site, was there any ground vegetation around that place where the tank has been buried?
No, it's, it's as you see it in the photograph.
So that suggests it's only recently been buried there?
I would say within this year it was.
Yeah, because I mean, that's what the application is about, is the tank. It's not about the house that exists, it's the tank. Okay, thanks.
Could, could I ask about the, one of the aims of the National Park, South Downs National Park, is the tranquility and how this fits in, the noise from the generator fits in with that policy?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I think we've obviously said that environmental health, I've stated they've got no idea of it, and I think if it ever does impact the tranquility, they will be notified and they do act accordingly, which I've certainly witnessed on previous applications of mine that have any potential.
Okay, so just to repeat to residents, if they are listening, that if they do have problems, then please contact the environmental health department at the city council. Um, so any further questions?
Yes, thank you, Chair, just on the matter of the operation of the generator. These are understanding that it's automatic. The property inside the generator will cut in and out according to demands being made by the occupant and availability of power? Or does it require visits to switch it on and off?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I would assume it requires the applicant to visit the site to actually turn on for potential visitors. Um, as we've heard, it is as a, as a need basis and the site is being, and the solar power, energy to.
It's funny, Chair, isn't it, because I think the backup might just kick in automatically, but we don't know the answer, I think, is the, and it will be a matter for the applicant to make sure that there's tourists in there, that they know how to, how to kick it in if, if, if they're out of power, I think is the answer.
Councillor Leamy?
Yeah, good. The essence of good neighbours, isn't it? Can we put in a condition where the generator won't run from eight o'clock in the evening to eight o'clock in the morning? We've got battery backup in this control system to allow for that to be a happy.
No, Chair, I don't consider that to be a reasonable condition in this case at all. Environmental Health are not raising an objection in that there happens to be a backup, you know, when there's an outage and that could well be through the night, and I don't think that would be a reasonable condition at all, Chair.
No, when you look at your battery control system, tell it when it can, when it can charge up during the day, at night you will have a generator before, after eight o'clock to run that, because you won't be using it. Therefore, it's a perfectly reasonable.
It might be the reasonable in terms of operational, it's not reasonable in planning terms to, Chair, and I don't think it would meet national tests.
All I'm really trying to do is alleviate any nuisance to the neighbours.
I, I really understand that, Chair. But, you know, as a planning committee, sometimes we don't have those e- extra sort of powers. We, we have to assess this based on what we've got. And I think my view, very much having regard to the environmental protection team, not raising any objection, given the proximity to neighbours and other powers, I really don't think it would be a reasonable condition. Miss Sutherland would be happy to add, if you could hear from her.
Chair, all I would do is agree with what Mrs Pennick has said. It's very clearly an environmental health, if there are nuisance intended as a backup. And I would suggest in terms of cost and the cost of LPG, it's highly unlikely that it will be used as anything other than a backup in the.
I know we can't put a condition on, but could we add an informative to say that we would expect the applicant to monitor the, the use of it, or I don't know, the noise of the running of it, and it would not be expected to be run as a permanent facility?
You know, I, I, I hear what you say, but I think we either agree to the planning application or we don't agree to the planning application. Aren't conditioned the way this generator is going to work.
We can, we can add an informative, but I suspect the answer is going to say BC, that is reasonable.
Yeah, with, I just, the applicants here and their agents, I think they've heard very strongly what you've said about that as a committee. If you read, you know, I mean, informative is just that, isn't it? It's a note, it's got no sort of powers or controls. I could liaise with environmental health and ask them, you know, they might think of it as some reasonable wording, but it's just that, isn't it? It would be a guidance.
I, I am going to ask the agent and applicant back to just tell us what they anticipate the use of the generator to be.
The generator in the four or five months of the year, which will be the sort of summer period and spring, where most of my lettings will, probably won't come on at all unless we get very, very bad weather. If there's bad weather, it's likely to come on for an hour a day. Be very happy to put something in the timing so it, it starts up just before eight o'clock and pops a battery up till midnight. I don't, I wasn't going to, couldn't have planned to have it running at night anyway. It, it is quiet, contrary to what.
Some people think it's not quiet. I'm not saying it is or it isn't. Um, so on the basis of what we just heard from the applicant, any way to add any? Are you, are you happy with an informative?
Could we make the timing between, say, 10 and 8? That'd give it a little bit more.
Yeah, or 10?
10 in the evening till eight o'clock in the morning.
I wasn't going to go as far as to recommend timing, just going to go and, and, and suggest that the applicant, that it might be along the words of that the applicant is reminded to have regard to the generator and consider its operations.
Who is going to check on this? It's a ridiculous informant.
I can't hear what you're saying.
Who is go, who is going to check on the hours of use? It's, it's, it's unenforceable unless somebody's on that side measuring it all the time. Now, there's no point putting sort of things.
Right, that's, that's your view, thank you. Do we hear any other views? I would like the informative put on, proposed by Mrs Pennick here, and I'm going to propose it. Do I have a second, though? Thank you. And could we vote on that, whether we include that or not? Okay, so that's minus two in the committee. Um, so I think we've got to the point of debate.
Um, yes, this is a difficult, this is clearly a difficult application and it's got a lot of history. But my sympathies, um, uh, to, to the applicant, I think it's been a difficult situation. They've had this planning permission since 2009 to, to create holiday accommodation. For whatever reason, that's not been possible until now. Um, hopefully they can get on, put the solar panels on and the generator will be very rarely used to back up the solar energy. Um, we rely for all holiday accommodation, we rely on local, local residents to notify us if conditions for using holiday accommodation are not being met. Um, and then we will ask enforcement to, to check. So I would, would remind local residents that they have that power to, to keep an eye on things. And if they are concerned, to, to raise it with enforcement. Um, because the, the restrictions on holiday accommodation are there and, and, and they should be met. This is not a residential permission, this is for holiday accommodation, and we all know what that means. Equally, with the noise nuisance, obviously at the moment, the generator is being run far more often than it would under normal circumstances once solar panels have been put in. Um, again, we all know the cost of gas is rocketing and, um, so I'm sure that the applicant will, um, put in their solar panels as urgently as possible. And once those are in, there, there should be very little need for the generator for more than an hour or so a day at the very most. So, um, in terms of noise nuisance, if it is a continuing noise nuisance, that can be addressed by the environmental health department and, and should be addressed to them, and it's not a planning issue. Um, the shed around the generator, it's wooden, it disappears into the trees, it's not on public view in any event. Um, so, um, that's fine and I hope that the, um, rock wool is doing its job to, uh, help to mitigate the noise. So, um, it's, it's a very simple application, just these two items. We're not talking about whether or not the building should be there, we're not talking about whether or not it should be a holiday accommodation, it already is. So I am content to support the officer application, the officer recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Pearson?
Looking at the actual application itself, which is about whether the tank should be buried or not, and whether there should be a generator alongside it. But first, whether the tank should be buried or not, the tank presently, according to the photographs, is bright yellow, no environmental impact if it's buried, reduces it so you can't see it. In fact, most people could walk past it, not even know it was there, which is a plus. Generator in a cabinet, uh, the basic generator creates, we've been told, 68 decibels of noise. Now, I'm speaking quietly, okay, amplified, the sound that I'm making now is round about 68 decibels. Now, the distance the neighbours are away from this site, I doubt very much, despite what is said, anyone can hear anything at all. The wind in the trees would make a louder noise. Indeed, we had an application between, uh, Sheriff Reith, as I recall, about a wind generator. And the noise of that wind generator is like 70-plus decibels. And the conclusion was, we couldn't hear the generator sound because of the wind through the trees. That would equally apply on this site. I don't know of any pla- planning application, uh, any planning policy that would suggest we should turn it down. You can't see it, you can't. see it, you can't hear it unless you're standing by it. What are we complaining about? It's not about the house. That is something this application is about, the tank and about the generator. Thank you for the report.
Thank you. Any further contributions to your debate? Councillor Westwood?
Thank you Chair. Yes, I'll be supporting the application, the officer in this case. I think there are sufficient powers around noise for anyone affected by that to go through the correct enforcement route. And also, if the accommodation is not used as tourist accommodation, is due recourse that way as well. So looking strictly at the planning application here, I will be supporting it.
Thank you. When councillor Cleare and I went out there to look at it, couldn't see it. So I think considering it's there, the only thing that we perhaps need to address is, is there any noise, disturbance noise from the generator? But the environmental health, if contacted, will sort that out. Lots of sort of fears about what might be used, or what might the house be used for in the future. Whatever they want to use it for, they have to use it currently for tourist accommodation. And any change to that, though, they will have to be a fresh planning application. So I'm in favour of this application because as councillor Pearson said, there's no material planning objection to it. And you remember, we had some training on retrospective planning applications, and the inspector said to us, for the advantage of them, oh, you can see what you're getting, and this is minimal, you know, the visual element is minimal. I don't think anyone else wants to speak, and we have one more application on this site. So can we turn to the vote? This application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour?
So all eight members, Chair?
So that's approved. Thank you very much. And last item of the morning is the same site. It's the erection of a shed for storage, garden maintenance equipment, SDNP stroke 21 stroke O5844 house, H.O.U.S., sorry. Case officer Stillhanna Harrison, and we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you Chair. This will pretty much mirror what I've just shown you, but it's slightly different photo. Here we have the location plan. Like photographs again. This slightly different photograph, standing at the entrance of the site, but the circle is just stating where the current shed is. Photograph taken from the public right of way. Again, to the far left, you have the entrance of the trees. You can just make out the... This is the shed in position. This is the site plan. Elevations of the building. Very much.
Thank you. So I do appreciate that we have probably discussed many of the issues already. Public speaking, you all have the right because you've registered to speak on this one as well. You don't have to if you don't want to. So parish council representative, councillor McCormick, do you want to speak? And then councillor Lumby? No. Ms Blunt and Mr Drudge, do you want to speak? So when you are ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you. The shed is ancillary to the maintenance of the property and the site for storing the...
I don't know, just cutting grass, chainsaws and...
Other maintenance tools. There are no landscape objections to the shed, which is a traditional construction and agrarian appearance. As such, it is a small-scale and low-key structure located amongst the trees and is unobtrusive, as the photographs just showed. The shed is sensitively located so as to have no material impact on public use. In any case, the scale and appearance of the shed is typical to rural properties and land use, therefore in keeping with the rural... No trees have been removed to facilitate anything on this site, including the shed, and therefore no impacts to habitat. Our tree consultant, our consultant has assessed the trees and concluded the shed will not have a detrimental impact. Property contributes positively to the natural beauty, wildlife and cultural heritage of the National Park in accordance with the first purpose of the National Park. The tourist accommodation will make a positive contribution to the second purpose. The letting of the tourist unit will allow the applicant to continue to main the property and the trees so that the site can contribute to, continue to contribute to the special qualities of the National Park. The officers confirm that the ancillary shed is acceptable in principle and has minimal impact on the character and setting of the National Park. The ancillary shed therefore accords with the requirements of local plan policy for the National Park. And we ask the planning committee to support the officer's recommendation. Do I have questions for Mr...
Just the, when my father bought the piece of land in 1986, it was an empty field. We've planted something like 3,000 trees. Some have had to be thinned out. We have created a beautiful piece of land. This shed is very important to carry on maintaining that stewardship of it.
Are there any questions? Councillor McLean?
Thank you. I wasn't going to, and then I heard the words galvanised shed, response to the environment. I feel galvanised shed can appeal positively to anything.
Well, actually, well, there's two things. One is that anybody could put this up under permitted development rights under normal circumstances. There are no permitted development rights under... I've seen a lot of agricultural farms, landholdings, sites that put up, you know, galvanised shacks, workmen's huts, just to keep things secure and dry, haven't you? I think it's very, it's in keeping...
Could you use your microphone councillor McLean?
Sorry, I'd say they don't respond positively. I would just say they're a job, they do what they're designed for. In my view, in my...
Yeah, yeah, these things are very subjective, but they are typical to the rural area.
Painted green, if I...
Well, that might be possible.
Does he want to speak? Councillor Rother?
Thank you very much. Yes, perhaps I could ask, perhaps you could consider painting it green because it's very ugly.
If that's the request, I'll paint it dark green. Very happy to do it. Is British racing green acceptable, or?
I think just British tree green would be good. Thank you.
Just asking for the size of it because I can't get the impression...
It's smaller than the bit between the tables here, by about 50% probably.
And, well, I'll ask the case officer, do we need to condition it that there are no, not used for accommodation? Don't laugh. Is it big enough? Could it be used for accommodation?
Thank you Chair. I'd be amazed if anyone...
Chair, can I just jump? I mean, it would be, you know, in a three-bed house, it'd probably be the bedroom, wouldn't it, at the back, with the single bedding? It's quite small in terms of its size. And it would need planning permission anyway, so if someone did move in and start, we would have other powers to remedy that.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Sorry for that silly question, but I felt I had to ask it. Any more questions? No. So yeah, thank you very much. Up and down, up and down. Thank you very much for coming along. So we've covered most of the issues, but so shall we just have questions on any bit of the report? Councillor Pearson?
I'm a little uncertain as to why we need planning permission for a garden shed at this.
Thank you Chair. So PD rights were removed when the site was given to the planning permission, but the PD rights were moved...
Any further questions? Debate? This application has been recommended for approval. And those in favour, please, Chair?
All members, Chair?
Right, sorry. So we'll just have a pause there.
I'm not clear what are you intending to do.
Was it you? I thought you were just making a comment, but you're suggesting proposing it a different colour.
And if Julie thinks it's reasonable and the applicant has accepted that he'd be happy to paint it, is that reasonable to condition?
I think it, I mean, I thought the colour was, it's a dark recessive colour anyway. Sometimes a green can, and I'm sort of channeling my landscape architects when we've dealt with other things. And they say sometimes, you know, we've dealt with this on telecoms where we have to paint the pole of various green colour, and some actually stand out against the landscape. So their normative advice to me is that a dark recessive colour is quite good. If the committee would prefer a green, we could agree a green sort of colour to a British standard and then ask for that to be done within a reasonable timeframe. But I mean, I thought the dark colour myself looked good, but Fiona's right, you did raise that, didn't you, as an issue?
It's not visible in the public domain. You can't, you can't see it at all, as councillor Cleare and I will testify to, because we tried to see it, but we couldn't see it. So if you want to propose to change the colour, then do.
No, it's no, it's fine. Carry on.
So, okay, rewind. This application has been recommended for approval. Those in favour, please show.
Is all eight members, Chair?
So this application has been approved. Thank you very much for coming along, and we will now be breaking for lunch and returning at two o'clock.